And what the plan is so that you can make better decisions on how you want to proceed in the future. And to basically highlight a state aid agency that you have access to, to help you facilitate, you know, spending your state aid funds as efficiently as you can. So before I get into that, I brought some materials and I'm not going to go through a page by page, but there's some things in here. This is what I've got to take. There's a few pages that are around. I think it's three separate documents that are all right there together. If you'll be wanting to copy that. But included in this is your current status of funds, right? That are concerning to Washington County and State Aid Program, so the State Aid P Fund, LSPP, and State Aid Bridge Program Fund currently available to the county and project program associated with it. Now, this is, this is not a public document, right? Because there are estimates associated with it as far as the general public go.
You know, we were trying to write over this at the meeting.
Right. So I'm not going to mention specific, you know, figures, but the, I think it's important to highlight how this, the structure of this document and how it's going to change over time. So secondly, there's some, there's a packet in here which is a presentation very well put together for new supervisors. It has a lot of information included in it concerning the funding sources and where that money comes from. And the formula is used to create it. But also included in that document, and I've already turned to this page, is a very general description of how a project works. I've already kind of given it to them. This is a very general description of how a project goes from being programmed by the county to become a project, and its matriculation through the State Aid system ultimately to be advertised and constructed. And the oversight provided by State Aid in that process. But I'd like to get into that process a little deeper in that there are several steps along the way that our IT people and Caleb Hammond have created a system in which there are, there's documentation that essentially, and dates associated with what is essentially the chain of custody. When we get the program, when we get the initial set of PS and E plans, when those plans are completed, completed the review process in our office, when those plans are returned to the county engineer, and so forth, and so on down the line. So each step along this process will be evaluated. And so the progress of any project in your state aid program. So I have some examples to show you of how that works. But we have taken the guesswork out of where you are in your state aid project. So the board within that process also has some responsibility when it comes to seeing that the project is in the lead to be advertised. And that is generally going to include working with your county engineer to see that utility relocates if happened, or any clearances that need to happen associated with local utilities. Additional responsibility is any right of way that needs to be acquired for the project. Because we can't proceed, all the work that Lorenzo and his staff put into creating what is called the Assembly Package, which is the completed plans and the contract documents, specifications, any special provisions associated with the job lined up to be a large stack of documents. That then sits on the shelf until we have right of way utility and environmental certifications before they can be advertised. So generally, the county engineer keeps the board motivated to complete any responsibilities they have to see that those last steps are complete. So sometimes we need to simply sit around for a long time because of these last hurdles that have to be overcome. But so that is the down and dirty, you know, overview of how State Aid works. But a timeline from programming to advertising, whenever that one should be, should be a matter of months, not years. And so we have to correct the timeline here for when State Aid projects are programmed and completed in Washington County. And so please use me as a resource to make that happen, right? So that we not only expand all of the funds currently available to Washington County for projects that you guys really need to make happen in a timely fashion, but so that we can highlight the performance of the county to try to get additional funds, right? That's what we ultimately want to say. So the powers that be that determine how much money we get to spend in this county, see that that money is well taken care of and expended in such a way that really benefits the citizens of the county. And I think I really want to show you too how State Aid can be a good vehicle to make that happen. So it has examples for this process and some of the information that there again upon request, you know, I can fairly easily query in, through our system. And this is all information, so just as an example, for a project that you have that is near completion, we are, we are in the assembly review process of this. So once State Aid determines any deficiencies with the contract documents or other provisions associated with the project, that will be returned to the county engineer. They'll make those corrections and then the final assembly will come back to me. And then I will check to see the status of those three elements that we need to advertise, right of way utility cert and environmental clearance. So on the front page, you'll see right here is a general overview. So this is LSPP, LSPP seventy-six thirty-two. So.
Yeah.
Could you tell us like what bridge it is?
What bridge is that?
Williams Bay.
Williams Bay. So on this page, we see that the program status is complete. So far, I don't have right of way utility or environmental plan review. Been complete through the, through the office review. And that's obvious to me because the assembly status is active and that we are in the assembly review process.
So we said we're in complete.
That's correct. So if you think about the steps that have to happen here, so the initial plans, the middle PS and E plans, that's preliminary surveying and engineering, so those are going to be your rough, rough draft, as it were. So the various departments in State Aid review those plans, make any notes as to things that need to be corrected. I get those plans. We then do an onsite plan in hand, as they call it, inspection of the job to potentially identify anything that wasn't caught in the initial survey for plant creation, be that, hey, that's in the way, or that's going to be an issue with construction. We make notes on those plans and then they are physically handed to the county engineer at that point because they will then make those corrections. Once they're corrected, the office review set of plans is submitted to State Aid. The date that we give those plans is noted in our system. I even have a metal box with physical index cards on it where I make notes of all this. We did, apparently State Aid did that since its inception, but Caleb was instrumental in finally bringing that set to a database that's accessible to others.
I have a question. Let's say there are some bridges need to be made, would that would link any questions?
Yes, if you, if you look through that document, in fact, what we've done is created, we've added the comments. So if you look on the second page, this, these are comments provided by our staff down below, so you'll see where provides linked data, needed modify misspelling, complete sectioning, remove underlocation from that. So these things are all written on the plans, but also cataloged in our database. So the data is logged when we get them. The individual reviewing the plans and the date that they receive them is noted. There are second, there are first and second level reviewers that happen here because, you know, multiple sets of eyes, you know, create the better document in the end. So you see the first, second level reviewers. The date, the date that it's complete within the process. Once that happens, an email is auto-generated and sent to anyone we place on the list. That's generally myself and the county engineer. It's sent by through Caleb Hammond. That says the office review is complete on this date. It gives you an additional option. There's an ID associated with each job. Need probably, but the county engineer or myself can then access this report if we want to see it based on that individual ID number. But anyway, the people on the email list are notified that it's been completed through this process and where the plans are going from that point forward. So there again, trying to eliminate any question as to what's going on at that point in time.
Yeah, LSPP seventy-six thirty-two, what's the origination date to be used for all sorts of scene without seeing?
That actually would be done on the title page, but based on, if you, you'll look at the status of funds, program date is next to that, that project. So yes, if you look by, under the LSPP program, it's seventy-six thirty-two, the date assigned as the program.
All right, twelve twenty-one.
So you're able to see when we receive the programs, when we receive the P S and E plans, when they're returned to me, yes, the inspection's done, the office review plan is submitted. There then returned to the county engineer for additional corrections. If cleared, sometimes there needs to be a second office review done based on deficiencies that require a second review, such that we all, before we authorize it's sent to be put together, which will then be reviewed for the final assembly submit. However, I think you'll see based on the timelines there, especially if, we've had some new staff members come on recently. So there was a, you know, it might take a couple of weeks to get one of the more complicated documents through us. However, we brought back Otis Williams upon contract after he retired. And a couple of staff that we've had to train, get up to speed, you know, are now fully operational. So generally, once we receive the documents, they are turned around forty-eight seventy-two. Period of forward.
Oh, so on the, on the LSPP, so one to group with five projects, all of them were programmed in twenty-one? Correct. And just what reason is that not being clear or? Is that the last y'all gathered of anything left?
Those are all.
What was the whole of?
Well, it was, well, not just getting the documents ready off. And then I see nothing's been programmed on the State Aid bridge. The last one you were working on. That's, that's, we had, we had not received any programs yet from the.
And only SAP was one thing programmed back in twenty-one also.
That's correct.
Misappropriated activity.
Nothing's ever. But the, of the five LSPP jobs that you do have within the last week, there is an active activity. Any questions about the process?
So as, well, you know, if you take any considerations and want to solve this problem, so we got about eight billion dollars worth of funds here. Yeah, about eight billion dollars. Is that, is this reflecting, I know they were talking about taking a million dollars away. Is this reflecting that or not yet?
Not yet. Technically, the way I understand it is the assessment of funds you've had, and this is all just LSPP, right? Because of the statutes associated with that, with those funds. But essentially, as of June thirtieth, that, that evaluation period of time to where State Aid engineered and then look and say, look, you've had this money for this period of time, hasn't been expended. You will, I believe, have an opportunity to plead your case, okay, on this. I've seen that, you know, the letter goes out and it's telling you, you're going to lose this money, okay? But we are going to have to, you know, based on what I've seen from your county engineer and the motivation by the board to get this money spent in a timely fashion, perhaps we can, perhaps we have a case to make. So, but that's uncertain.
Okay.
I have a question.
Please.
Yes.
We're not in a meeting, so go ahead and jump right in.
I have a question. I know the last meeting we accessed here, my favorite request was here, we sent us the appeal. I don't know if you received appeals from this hearing we had.
Well, you're not in the appeal process because you haven't received notice.
What is the phrase that I asked for the statute, because I'm not familiar with the statute. He brought it to our attention. And I made a request and he said he would send it to the president, the appeal of statute.
I believe that statute is going to be referenced in the notice. You know, the last year we.
Well, I just wanted to get it in advance so we could start reading and figure out, you know, so we can be proactive on what we need to do.
Well, last year we had one, one million, and we went on and actually asked for the extension and it was granted. That's part of the issue here is that notices provided, extension granted, and nothing happened.
What is the blue right corner on the column, this is a minimal monthly increase, what is that?
So initially, ninety percent of the estimate you have access to. And then the rest of the money is broken out over the four-year term on a monthly basis. That, that fund that's at the top grows by that amount. So depending on the project and where you are in the board term, we would have access to the entire amount.
And then the other, now, the LSPP seventy-six, what are the, what bridges are those, Lorenzo?
Which one? I don't have the sheet, just looking at it.
Well, you should talk about all the LSPP jobs. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one.
Oh, twenty-eight is Nightingale, twenty-nine is Handley, thirty is Baker, thirty-one is Burdette, and thirty-two is Williams Bay.
All right, and then on SAP.
Thirty-two is Williams Bay.
And SAP seventy-six, ninety-six, what is that?
It should be seventy-six seven.
No, he's talking about that.
Oh, Will Cox, that's Will Cox's bridge. It's, it's open now. We installed the cover, but we want to know how much we're going to get for the bids to see about the funding, so. Yes.
Aren't they reversed?
Yeah, SAP. Once we, once we finish this SAP, we currently have a SAP project now, paving project. So we had to ask for money, extra on that project, you see what I'm saying? So we're going to program, well, we may not have to program it again, but once we get to, after June thirtieth or whenever, we get another SAP, we're going to put Will Cox into that.
Where, where do you stand on the plan prep?
Once we get these LSPP, we will try to get it advertised.
Well, I mean, where do you, when am I going to get the S and E?
After these LSPP, we can get advertised.
What's been on the five LSPP, what's been the holdup on those?
Just getting the plans.
Because they're programmed in twenty-one, twelve twenty-one.
Right. But it's not, you have two different things. Now, I'll let Jay go through the process, but the process is program and then there's submitting of the plans. That's, that's what.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. So where, that's what I'm saying. So it was programmed in twenty-one and then start submitting the plans and that, what's been the holdup on those? That's been two and a half years ago.
It's just a lot of internal things of, we've worked on a lot of projects. It doesn't, what Jay's doing now is going through the process. So we can reflect on the past, but I mean, it's not going to help what he's doing now. He's trying to educate the, the board on what the process is.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, if they don't hire you, then since twenty-one, they were programmed in twenty-one, five of them were programmed in twenty-one, it's been a half years. So not at all, it's been on our, our end, and if it has, what has it been and have we fixed that problem?
They have the plans as far as going through the process. They have all the plans except for Nightingale.
Except the way?
Nightingale, yeah. So if you go over that process again, but like you said, first review, outward review, right of way, first occasion. There's a lot of things that they need before they give you permission to advertise.
There's emails requesting for additional implementation on projects. From State Aid to Washington County, and maybe you need to see. That, that's what I really want to highlight here, that there are no delays in the state aid process. So to answer your question.
From y'all's opinion.
That's right. To answer your question, the delays have been.
All right.
So.
Without question.
So like first, I know we have the right way. So including the right way, sometimes you have situations where it's hard to get your right way through your type of rate. Because I'm just, I'm just going by what I saw with the, the bridge I just didn't leave. And I know just to get the electricity move, to get capable and access, that took almost five months.
Whatever delays you're experiencing now are not a problem.
So there's still no right way problems, same?
Apparently not.
And what about with the, and I, because I was told that we were waiting for the private company coming with and to go out and get maybe.
I have nothing to do with that.
No, I know, I know, I understand you don't, but I'm just saying.
The forces behind the completion of those things, you know, are definitely the current view of your representatives. So.
I guess my question is to you, we, the situation, let's say we doing some geo work, okay? And we're waiting on equipment. And for every reason their equipment is not available, it's in a location. Do we send in an email that, you know, we're on a time constraint, wait on this geo company to do some work for us and equipment has not made it? Do we let you know this in advance? Because then you can look around, try to identify another geo company. And of course, you know, Mississippi's very limited on a lot of geo companies. So you are, so when you run into that situation, you really literally have to wait until their equipment comes available and it comes to your area. Because really, at the end of the day, we are in competition with other counties that provide the site service and also in this.
I think if these are reasons you've been given for the delay.
Well, it was brought to my attention, I did see some of that, I can, I'm going to go back. I'm going by what I saw, the bridge we did in Cleveland, the county did it. And there was one of the big delays that slowed us completely down. We were waiting on the company to bring their equipment and it took them probably about three months before the equipment made it. Even though, you know, the request was made, waiting in advance, but they had another project ahead of us and we literally had to wait on it. And I know those were some delays that I saw, because I really asked a lot of questions with the bridge that was still believing. And actually, it constantly kept putting us back and it went rain, it put us back. So I, I guess my concern is, when you run into those delays, is it feasible to submit to State Aid to say, well, this is, you know, we have to sit back here, especially if you got three months to get that, or a four months to get that? If we let you guys know in advance what kind of delays we're running into?
I highly recommend, so there again, you know, Lorenzo and I speak.
I'm just asking for myself.
And, and I, and I'm generally asking him, where, where's my point, what's going on, you know? Providing what encouragement I can to get things done. So if he, if y'all are having an issue with that and it's communicated to me, I'm, I'm your lobbyist. I'm your biggest lobbyist to say, here's what Washington County's having to deal with, you know, in a situation I can be in.
And it means my fault that for those things I really saw with Bree Street Bridge and this is my bridge I ever worked on in Washington, and so, what citizens are called, some issues are called. And so that's why I really got involved, talking to the general contractor, see where we are talking to Mr. Lorenzo as well, see where we are, so I can convey the message to the citizens. Because that bridge was in a residential area and everybody wanted to know what's what. So that was a great learning experience for me, some of the delays I saw in the process.
Let me get Lee on, come straight to you, Lorenzo.
Uh, that, when was Bree Street Bridge completed?
May eighth, yeah?
Yes. Well, that's what I'm saying, you're talking about Bree Street Bridge. Well, it was started after this twenty-twenty-one and completed during that time. And we still, we're still getting anywhere with these five bridges. We're talking about delays. I think we're just using a bunch of excuses is what we're doing. And there's no reason in my mind that this was programmed in twenty-one. I don't care how, you know, there's just no excuse for that. I mean, we can make excuses, but there's no legitimate excuse for twenty-one.
Oh, I tried, that's what I tried to, when you asked me the question, I said it was internal. When I say internal, it was things like Ms. Brooks mentioned that internally, you know, far as the design. We could, like you said, we started Bree Street Bridge after we even programmed it. There is not things internally we have to go through with the LSPP project that we have to go through with the county project. See, county, we can get our geotechnical, we don't have to submit it to anyone, you see, but the State Aid. So it's, things can be streamlined. Not saying that the LSPP is, the LSPP is a different program. If you, if a county build a bridge and you have to go through the LSPP project, process, it's going to be longer. Either way, if you start at the same time, it's going to be longer with LSPP, just because you have an extra review process.
But they got to have it to review it. I mean, we've got to get our part over there. I'm just saying that two and a half years, we, we.
Right, you, you're right.
I'm, I'm trying to look at this in a positive way and, and, and get back on the right. But this is just unacceptable that, I mean.
Right, we, we all up for the two years, okay, the two years is longer than we anticipated, right? When I say internal, it's things like the geotechnical one.
Is that on our end or is that on State Aid?
It's nothing, nothing.
Is that on our, it's got to be a one on you.
You're going to let me finish, Mr. Brooks?
Okay, boy.
Lorenzo, let me be clear about something. Let me be very clear about something.
But I can't double talk, that's what I'm saying.
Because you're not in order, you're not, we're not in a meeting. But there's a certain level of respect that we're going to have to have each other.
But I was talking to someone, people start raising their voice.
Right.
Others start raising their voice. But I'm, I'm not over talking to them. You said level of respect. And I heard the supervisor raised his voice while Lorenzo was talking. So we don't talk about that respect, that's making across the board with everybody.
It's clearly.
Don't pit for it just because, you know, you.
That there's an issue with getting. That there's an issue with getting projects done, Mr. Anderson, and I don't care how many excuses.
I'm not, I don't make excuses, I didn't, I'm not making no excuses, I identified what I saw in the project at Bridge Street, and it had a reflection of the engineering firm.
We have to do better, and go ahead, we're having this conversation today, and this information, Jay, even though we're gonna give it all back to you, we love to be able to communicate this with our community, so they all know exactly what they have around us for, and working in Washington County, when it comes to services in this community, are a disservice, a clear disservice to this community. I've never served on a board in a position with a group that has been, that has failed to meet that mission. And we're not hitting the marks here, it's completely embarrassing to me to know that not only did we have to ask for the extension on one point one million last year, if we are again in June thirty, we're about to have a million taken anyway, that's unacceptable. We have not done any significant projects, and here's a list of them that were submitted in twenty twenty-one, and it's clear, the problem is not at state aid. The problem is not in Jax, the problem's in Washington County, and as long as you uphold and support this type of performance, you're going against an oath that you put your hands on Bible and you swore to take care of these citizens, and it's not getting done, Ms. Brooks, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I, I totally disagree because when I came, yeah, of course, cause when I came into dis, for, disrepair, I have bridges, all of my bridges are over. Uh, three, two of the bridges we were supposed to tear down and rebuild, we didn't have to do that, it was more so just, you know, maintenance, and we got it done. Now, if we're talking about, uh, delays, this board has created so many delays when we do projects, uh, the president make a big hoopla, we put a hole on it, and sometimes we didn't get back to address those issues to two or three months, so that was number one, because of the engineer of state aid, and I'm not saying I'm not on state aid account on the thing, but we're gonna be working on it, this board has put several delays on projects, one project, uh, we were advised that we were doing it incorrectly with the review process, and they get to go through process, I call state aid, they advise us to implement an act, we stopped the projects completely, we came back two months later, and we got the project back, it was a bridge, got it back on track, so, we hate.
What does that, what does that have to do with state aid?
I said, I'm saying it had a reflection of state aid, this was this board that made a decision off some, you not familiar with it.
Sounds low. We're, 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 we're talking about state aid program.
Can I just, sorry.
Uh, we gotta, we gotta do what he's, he's, because we, I, I, I wanna, reason here is hope to use me as a resource for now, because the, if by some chance we're able to convince ours to be, Monday, it's gonna be, it's gonna go a different timeline. Like, I intend to have seventy-six thirty-two ready to advertise in a month or less, and I wanna advertise another bridge every month thereafter. Okay, and if, if you just get behind me and support me, and that's, it can happen.
We're gonna meet on, uh, Monday the first, and we're gonna ask the board to just that.
I'm like the, you know, I, I still didn't, wouldn't able to talk.
Skip me, but, go ahead, let me.
All right, say, I'm gonna do one amount of statements that raises your hand, and I don't talk over you, and I don't expect anybody to talk over me, that's why I do that.
You did.
Okay, and I, but I gave you back the floor, you asked me, I gave you back the floor, matter of fact, I'm, okay, you took, but I, I, I let you talk, so, all I'm.
I wasn't finished talking.
Just like you're interrupting me, okay, all I'm asking you was because I'm just, I'm aggravated because I get just so frustrated with the, 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 making excuses for things, and when we know where the problem is, and that's why I asked you directly, is it our end or state aid, and that's all I ask you. Well, and that is just, the answer to that is say either our end or state aid, say that, if it's our, well, please, go ahead, that's all I ask.
And I answered the question, I specifically said, it's not on state aid, I said it was internal. Now, if you wanna go into detail, that was, that was the key, I was trying to get this meeting, I understand Jay's agenda, he's helping us, but we keep on going back to see, point this finger, point that finger, let's move forward, Jay just mentioned to the board that he can give us an opportunity to expedite things, and possibly get this meeting done, right? So, it's a possibility, but we wanna point fingers and use sound bites to wherever your agenda is. So, I'm saying, why I say internal, I can go a list of things internal, not on state aid, internally, engineer, geotechnical, uh, utilities, uh, staff, it's just a bunch of things that can delay anything, if you've been, ever been in construction, you know it can be any delay, right, anything, so, that's what I'm saying, let's move forward, let Jay, uh, have the floor and move us forward from this point on.
Well, I would just say, I mean, we're, we're moving forward, I mean, I, we're getting, we're gonna pull it along, and if that surprises, we're gonna answer. But we're, we're, you know, Washington County, that's another one, we're gonna get, get built, and so, to be, uh, any, any delays in the communications from state aid going forward, I would, I'll be getting a copy on the rest of the information for whatever these projects, and I'll make sure that I pass it on, and you also know exactly what's at, what the concern is on. I, I do have a couple more things here to throw in, so, expedite this process, okay, so, uh, sometimes the final stages, so, when I do get that right away cert, and that utility cert, and check the environmental box, E U one sixty's taken care of, that may happen at noon on a Monday. And the deadline for the local newspaper is Tuesday, finally, okay? I wanna advertise these projects as soon as it is possible to do so, so, that would probably entail not waiting for a formal board meeting to get authorization advertised. Okay, so, if the board can get the president authorization to sign off on this, or the vice president, if the president's not available, so that we get these things moving, and not have to wait possibly two weeks or a month, you know, to get these things formally done. Secondly, we're gonna take bids as soon as we possibly can, so that's fifteen working days after the second advertisement, right, that's any of the holidays. That may fall on any given day of the week, right, so, we'll take bids, I'll open them, I'm, you're, I'm checking these things to make sure that each bid is legal and complete, we will fill out the bid tab, I will produce a board order associated with the new project fund that's gonna be created. That will be then submitted, uh, for the boards, you know, uh, okay at that, president's signature, so, uh, I recommend that be handled as soon as possible, because it's getting that, that board order back to my contract and my accounting division such that that project fund is created. Uh, and at that point, the board can then begin to be reimbursed for any payments you've made on preliminary, uh, engineering services, um, and that a board order can be, uh, issued, and we can get that project working, so, I've seen it before, just those things I mentioned can add a couple months of dollars. So, those are things I need y'all to be aware of, and that'll really help forward this process a lot.
Any questions? Anything I want to say?
Oh, another point I need to make, so, you recently passed a bunch of programs, a bunch of new programs. We're at a stage now, especially with your, uh, LSVP funding, that, uh, as we get these final plans in hand, we are realizing that the, uh, original estimates are, are very low, so, as an example, uh, LSVP seventy-six thirty-two is listed on your status there, is now gonna cost somewhere north of nine hundred thousand dollars.
And it was what though?
Uh, that, LSVP seventy-six thirty-two.
And you're thinking it was over here, so, it's prepared business, that three seventy-three, and you're thinking it's gonna be closer to that?
Okay, so, part of the factor, coming back to geotech, and I was in geotech for ten years, uh, it is imperative that that information be acquired, because, uh, Washington County can be in a seismic, can be in seismic zone two, depending on soil conditions, okay, so, if it's determined that the consistency of the soil is at a D or an E level, that pushes you into seismic zone two, that's to do with ground acceleration and so forth and so on, but anyway, that drastically changes the design of the bridge, and ultimately the expense, so, um, we're gonna have to really review the programs that have been submitted to see, to, to make sure the estimates are correct. However, we run into a situation now where you have available LSVP money, that's now gonna be eaten up a lot faster, because the other bridges are, were, have been determined to now be in seismic zone two, right? Some of these things are gonna be much more expensive than you've got listed as the estimate, but if we program a lot of other projects where we're using the hypothetical pot of money and allocating that on these new programs, it's gonna tie up money that we're gonna need to build the five bridges on this list, okay? So, we're gonna change those programs to reflect a use, and this is there again, does not obligate the county to use funds to build these future bridges, but it gets it on our books and reflected in your status of funds, we're gonna change the, whatever funds, state aid or, or LSVP used, maybe not state aid, and not SAPP if you've got any of those, but primarily LSVP, I wanna change those programs just to reflect county funds used in the estimates generated, right? Because if we say LSVP, we then have to deprogram those projects to free up the money to get these bridges built, but I do want them on the books, okay, because I've been told that there's gonna be work done on them, okay, because, you know, you want the plans submitted and the creation of the assembly process for when you do have the funds available, as you see, if you wait for a new board term to get a program, and nothing is done until that point, you can have delays along the way, so we need to get to working on these bridges, you guys have, what, a hundred and eight eligible structures for, for state aid and, uh, LSVP funding? The best way to knock as many of those out as you possibly can is to get them on the books, but let's not, let's, let's not encumber your available funds for construction for the next few months or so, so these programs are gonna be revised and resubmitted, we're gonna call it county funds where appropriate, to get them on the books, and then we want to see the steps being done on these bridges as well, so that I wind up with these assemblies sitting on my shelf that I can say, see? We need money, we need money, Washington County is ready to go, their representatives have, have put in the effort to get me projects that have everything we need except money.
So. I have another question just to clear, LSVP, except for bridges, state aid roads are just.
That is local system bridges, non-state aid route.
Okay, non-state aid routes, okay, the next question just to clear, SAP is?
SAP is your state aid program funds.
And it's used for what?
That can be used for roads or bridges, state aid routes or bridges on state aid routes.
Okay, and SAPP?
That is for bridges solely on state aid routes.
Bridges only state aid.
That's correct, and so.
And LSVP bridges not on state aid.
That's correct, and SAPP fund can be supplemented with your SAP funds if needed, but not vice versa.
So, on the SAPP, uh, the board has, um, have a list of bridges that they already want on that, so, I would, uh, recommend the board to approve, let's start on the, uh, up to the geotechnical preliminary, uh, to get some of this stuff moving, because, like you said, if it's three or four months, we can have that out of the way, and it's difficult, we going through the programming process and.
Is this one of the, that programs you're gonna submit that they've already done?
Yes.
Well, what would prevent you from starting work on it anyway?
Board order.
You have to have a board order to start work on it.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, the part of the place, just.
I have a question, what is the norm in other counties, so I will go.
If I get a program, as far as I, the way I understand it to be, you've told your county engineer, get the work on it, you give authorization, because the, I know it happens differently depending on the county, you could get a bill from your county engineer at some point along the way, that, that's, they're looking to be paid for what they consider preliminary engineering on a project, right? So, if they've submitted plans to, to state aid and it's gone through the, the B S M E process, well, essentially, everything before the job is left or under contract is considered preliminary engineering, um, creation of the assembly, submittal of plans, all the things necessary to do that. And of course, by the state aid contract, the, the, the reimbursement for engineering is twelve percent, right? So, this is metered out over the force, uh, of the project, or it's, it's seeing United's twelve percent. Does the preliminary have any specific?
It's four, it's four point eight.
It's four point eight, right, so, your rep, your engineering representative at some point is what's gonna be paid, wants to be paid for their activities associated with creating that assembly. You will not be reimbursed for those expenses, however, until it's under contract, so, the, if, the relationship with your county engineer is such that you will pay them prior to, you know, whatever period of time prior to your reimbursement, if you're getting paid to pay them, it's up to you, right? So, uh, however, I think that relationship is built on the notion that that reimbursement is gonna happen, you know, fairly quickly along the process, so, I think to everyone's advantage here that we get things done, and.
Where's the, all those, those, uh, programs you were just talking about, can, when you get programs, they were SAPs or LSVP, what were?
Half of them were LSVP and half of them were SAP.
Well, this is my question, and if, if that's the case, then, I got a question for you, uh, so, say, uh, SAP, uh, state aid or LSVP, can you move that one fund to another fund, like SAP to LSVP, can you do that?
No.
All right, well, let me just stop there, hold on, what's it, so, if that's the case, you said these things are, are basically three times as much right now, or what we've got programs, so, right now, if everything's gonna be three times as much, why program anymore, because it's gonna take the remainder of those funds to be able to complete those, so why, you know, and so that's why I said, we can shift those funds, because right now, if I'm reading this right, but it looks like about one point six million that is programmed right now, there's two point seven million that's not programmed, so, but that's five projects, so, you're talking about tripling that, which would be right at four point five million total on that, so, there would be no reason for us, or, or am I missing something wrong?
Yes, you are missing the, the, what I was trying to connect there. It's important that the, that the bridge is beyond what you have available funds or are programmed such that a project number is created within our system, okay? And that if you have, if your county engineers taking advantage of this fact that, hey, we're gonna be here a while until the, into the next board term, into the next funding application, we have plans sitting on the shelf, ready to go, there will be no more of these two-year delays after then, another board, could be different people, everybody, uh, new board sits, they can go, excuse me, we have four projects ready to go, and we do.
They're shovel ready.
They're shovel ready at that point, okay, but if you wait until you get new money, program a project. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, so, you need to communicate to county engineer that you want production on these projects regardless of whether you have the funding available to build it.
That's always been the case, yeah, money is there for our projects. Anything else?
Uh, I don't, but, uh, really, I'm available for questions, answers.
Outstanding.
This is a conversation about these general things, I'll be, uh, be here when you need me to be, and, uh, Lorenzo and I, we're, that's the week to week.
Questions coming from the board.
Yes, thank you, because I really appreciate it, I think we all appreciate it, and how we need to, so, you are so active.
Well, I appreciate you guys meeting on such quick, you know. Well, I appreciate you guys being on such quick, right, because I wanted to create, get some momentum. Let's not let that slide off. Any liquid bait, what you want, oh, no, no, I just need that, that's qualified, that's what he needs with. And, and any of these numbers individually, the, or, the board, the board agents, you know, I can provide that, or any detail you need, really, it's just, it's kind of sensitive information prior to the project you have being, being planned.
Outstanding. Uh, any questions from anybody in the audience, if there was a question, if you all wanted to ask one?
What's your?
Uh, go ahead.
So, my question is, has any state aid project been completed and reimbursed to this county? With the jobs that have been out there, specifically, I know two bridges, it's over two million dollars, I think, have any of those been reimbursed to our county, have we completed any state aid projects?
Well, over the last board term, we have, we are, we've got one that we're still working on, and that is, um, an overlay project in several roads.
But not bridges been completed?
That's correct.
So, there was, to my understanding, it was two and a half million dollars basically that was paid out of our county road and bridge budget, right?
He would know, he would know that.
Okay, but, but it's that, you would.
Yes, we, we have expanded county funds.
The Pearl Road and the Leland Bridge, so two million dollars that came out of our county.
It's the Tucker Patterson Bridge.
I don't know about the amount.
The Tucker Patterson Bridge.
What is the bridge, bridge break there?
It was formerly called, it's called Tucker Patterson Bridge.
I got you, I got you.
But we don't, we don't, I don't, I don't really know about a lot of money.
We got reimbursed.
And then, you, you, you did some?
Yeah, I, I just would like.
We did get reimbursed for the SAP, because we ninety-five percent completed, state aid pays the contractor directly.
Say that again.
Through the seven inch?
Yeah, for the, for the paid project.
Okay, yeah, so we are ninety-five percent completed, we're being held up by the railroad office.
For the bridge, for the two bridges?
No, no, no.
That's uncompleted.
But we paid those out of our Rock County Road and Bridge budget, when we didn't have to, right?
It seems as though there was a possibility that, uh, these could have gone through the state aid programs.
That question, is it too late to get reimbursed? Is that the question, sir?
Well, you won't be reimbursed, um, through state aid funds as the, as it was not allowed to go through the state aid process.
I understand, everybody got that.
Can I ask you all a question?
Come on.
All right.
Uh, for the reporter gift, you know, I'll get you one.
Jim, ladies, we got a million dollar loss coming, not using money, we got close three million in Leland and Bray Street Bridge, you got your Broadway Airport Road that, uh, I know is there wanting to advertise, and it's not approved, where are the funds coming from? You know, that's about a million dollars, what's this gonna raise our taxes to, to pay for all this? And then we got three hundred percent inflation coming on all this stuff we got coming, I, I kinda see a bad deal heading our way.
Ms. Davis, uh, let me go right to the Broadway thing, uh, you know, we're, we're in the process now of generating funds into Broadway, uh, it was a, uh, request, I think myself, and I know Mr. Anderson was in a meeting with Pete Booty.
Booty Jack.
Pete Booty.
Booty Jack.
Booty Jack.
The Secretary of Transportation.
Yeah. And that was one of the asks we had for, for some of that funding, one of the other funding opportunities to get that one done, uh, right now, this board has not had any conversation about any raising taxes, don't even think about that.
Well, I understand.
But, Ms. Davis, hold on one second. Our issue right now is to spend money we have available at the state level, and if you were, if, what I heard and understand is, if we were to execute projects and have more shovel rated projects, we could have an opportunity to still request more funds, not raise taxes, this board has never had that conversation, so, you know that.
Let's just speak, well, Mr. Davis, uh, there was a big meeting with City Bridge, okay? And we talked about, the president of, of the board talked about raising taxes, this board will be talking about raising, so you won't get it confused, we will be talking about raising taxes in our county, because we, one thing we gotta issue, I, I shared at the party, we have law enforcement, they don't have enough law enforcement, they're underpaid, so that conversation will be talked about, the board being, we've had conversations, I don't want you to get confused, it's not a conversation.
I'm not confused, we spent five million dollars without getting reimbursed out of Rock County funds, that's, that's not rocket science.
Well, let me go back to, back to Bridge Street slash, uh, Patterson, the Tucker Patterson Road, when I came home, pretty much they had already identified what they were gonna do, okay? And so, it was a need to get that bridge open, the reason why it was a need is in the heart of Leland, Mississippi, we had a situation, if the other bridge broke down or had a problem, we would have a group of people about, almost a thousand people.
I'll, I'll try to believe all that.
Well, can I get finished?
Well, we didn't get reimbursed.
Can I, can I please be, can I get that? So, during that process, these supervisors like to say, well, you know what, uh, you can get my money, and we had to start the process all over again, because it was already programmed, so the concern was, I had to be concerned about the safety of the citizens, and so I pushed, I pushed it, to make sure that the citizens of Leland have safe transportation and a good bridge to go on, because the bridge been closed for six years.
Let me, let me break it.
Um, I understand for Mr. Jim, he was like, if on the outside with the N, or if not knowing the number of bridges we have, uh, I'm, I'm just saying for any, um, okay.
I, I know a lot more than you think, I'm, I'm not, you know.
Okay, so, only statement that was said about the county just wasting five million dollars, I just don't want it out there that the county, that, that the county wasted five million dollars, the county has two hundred and fifty-six bridges, right? We, I had forty closed bridges, right? So, looking at the bridge plan, we only received, uh, let's just say two point five million dollars in LSVP fund, there's no way you're gonna get those forty closed bridges with two point five million dollars. So, the county chose the bridge they want for LSVP, uh, some of the bridges for, uh, at the time eligible for SAP, but we found out we, we paid them, and, uh, and they chose to use the, the county funds to, because it is county infrastructure, to take out their pocket to build the bridge, in which we have to do, uh, because it's, it's county roads, and one of them is in the school district, and one of them was a major, uh, thoroughfare, so, there was a strategic plan, not all of us, hey, let's get that done, you know, we just can't use LSVP for everything.
So, I think you make a valid point, it's not a waste, to, to.
Say it again.
It's not a waste of county money to replace your bridges, okay? It just, so, and, and the county does have a lot of needs associated with the limited funds that through the state aid program, so, um, but, in the future, uh, it's a service, you know, that we're more than happy to do, is if you do have a bridge on a state aid route, or you're doing a local road, that you would like us to review your plans, contract documents, these kinds of things, and that, that is also, uh, okay, yeah.
I'm gonna say this, we're doing a terrible job in this county, spending state aid money, we're doing a terrible job, we can dress it up, and we can put a screen, but now we're doing a terrible job, and if that's the way the county will continue to be going, then we'll get what we need, you know? Uh, David, we do appreciate you taking out of your time.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Miss Williams, you have a thing this week?
Well, I was just gonna agree with what he was saying, we can't, why, why do we?
Can't hear you, Sam, give me a second.
Why do we have to, I'm Barbara Williams, why do we have to, you know, use state, use the county money? If we got state aid money, like he was saying, we utilize what the state gives to us and not take from the county, even though if the county has it, we can utilize that in another place, instead of using it for something that's.
Well, I, I think so, Lorenzo's point is that you have a lot of bridges that need to be replaced, and, you know, using county funds on immediate needs for bridges, I would not consider a waste of money, because, but we are gonna spend what wasn't spent on that bridge, on other bridge, on other bridges, but to, to your point, and, dude, we're sitting right here, inflation, uh, inflation is, has eaten up, that four years it's taken us to get to this point, we're now building less because of the inflation situation that's going on.
Yes, that'd be lovely, Lee.
You're exactly right, inflation, so we gotta get.
Two and a half years is unacceptable.
It, it, it's unacceptable.
Who fought this inflation up?
All right, go ahead.
Who fought this inflation up?
Oh, inflation, all right, we can cut it right there. Everybody good?
It's gone.
Jake, come on.
I, I just wanna say, you know, but, that's another motivation that we should all have, to just get through these as fast as possible, since we don't know what may happen, or a COVID scenario, or another situation like that, where, uh, it just, things we have that let us, you know, along the way, and if we create, if we get this moving right now, I think our cost per bridge will decrease, if there's a lot of good bridge construction going on in Washington County, you get contractors up here that wanna stay up here, continue at a price, right? You get a lot of action, go, get contractors who are up here, they wanna finish this job, they do this job, that and all the time, lead to better, uh, prices.
All right, Jake, if, if nothing else, you're just passing a clock out, you're the suit, a bird's looked at me and said, close this one.
Yeah.
And, uh, no, no, we, we gonna, this, this, we just gonna, uh, this is a call.
No, it's a work session, it's not meetings.
Now, you got no, this ain't no meeting. Well, we opened it, we'll go get enclosed, this work session out.
So, I'm gonna close work session.
Yeah, do I need a one? One second, all the same, aye, that's enough, appreciate everybody for coming out, and Jake would really do a thank, good thank you, uh, for it, Jim.